Great, so today is June the 2nd, 2021. The time is 7:29 PM and I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council Regular Virtual Meeting. City Clerk, can I get a roll call?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here.
And City Treasurer Marie Contreras.
Here.
Nice to see you, Marie, in person, finally. And then Shannon, do we have anybody for an invocation today?
Yes, we have Pastor Flores.
Okay, so I'll hand it over to Pastor Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to begin our council meeting in prayer. Yo quiero leer en Salmo 127 la palabra de Dios dice: Si yo va no edificaré la casa, en vano trabajan los que la edifican. Si yo va no guardaré la ciudad, en vano vela la guardia. Por demás es que os levantéis de madrugada y vayáis tarde a despozar, y que comáis pan de dolores pues que a su amado dará Dios el sueño. Gracious God, we are thankful that you are a good God and that you watch over your city. I thank you for our mayor, I think for our city council, and all those who desire, Lord, to honor you by serving in this city. Or we pray for those in need today, those, Lord, who have suffered through this pandemic season. We pray, God, for your presence, your peace in their lives, Lord. We pray, Lord, and we thank, or thankful for our graduates from our schools and our school district this season, Lord. We're mindful, Lord, as citizens, they are contributors to our city as well. And now, Lord, we pray for your presence upon our council today. May they seek your wisdom in all that they do, that in all decisions we honor you and serve your people effectively and efficiently. In the wonderful name of Jesus Christ, we pray, amen.
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 And thank you Pastor Flores for that. At this point, if you are able to stand, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Sorry, and I believe it's Marie Contreras who's gonna lead us today.
Could you, if you may, everyone? Your hand over your right, I mean, your right hand over your heart, and join me to say our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which stands one nation under God, with visible liberty and justice ruled.
Thank you. And so, at this moment, closed session hasn't finished, so there's nothing to report, is that correct, Shannon?
Attorney, I think there was one item to report. I'll go ahead and work out from closed session. There's having problems. There was a motion to move change on pine oak property, property negotiations. Motion from Garcia and Hernandez and past the eyes. Garcia, Hernandez.
So at this moment, we move over to Proclamations, Commendations, and Presentations. And so, at this moment. Yes?
If I may.
Councilmember Hernandez.
If I could just make a quick announcement and do a closing, if that's okay, sir?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I want to take this opportunity today to close in the memory of Sergeant Dominic Vaca, the San Bernardino County Sheriff, who just passed, I believe it was on Monday. I also want to, you know, close in memory of LA County firefighter Tony Corral. Obviously, this has been a very devastating week for our public safety officials, and, you know, they're always out there protecting and serving our community, so we just want to extend our humble gratitude to them, to their families, and to their colleagues, including those that serve here in the Baldwin Park Police Department and our local fire station. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Yeah, the, the report of a closed session is not clear to the YouTube channel. Can we have a legal counsel to report it again?
Yes, I'm available, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like me to report out.
Yes, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council discussed multiple items in closed session. There was no final action taken, and therefore, no reportable action.
Yeah, I think he was on the Zoom and he might not have heard that action, so we will consult the attorney and the city clerk for the minutes and correct that.
Okay, thank you. So at this moment, we move on to Proclamations, Commendations, and Presentations. And we begin with Pride Month Proclamation, and it's gonna be presented to San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center, and I believe we have their president here, Camilia Camallón. Are you gonna, is she coming up here, Shannon? Is that okay? Yes, yes.
Shannon, if we can have them check the audio, I just got a message that it keeps going off. Yes, please.
Before I present this to you, I just want to read it off. LGBTQ+ Pride Month, whereas the path towards LGBTQ+ equality and liberation has been paved by Americans who have had the courage to stand up and fight for their basic human right to love and be loved. And whereas, on June 4th, 2019, California State Governor Gavin Newsom recognized LGBTQ Pride Month in the state of California, stating, "We must demand equal rights for all to create a California for all." LGBTQ Americans have made and continue to make positive and long-lasting contributions to society by advancing areas of diversity, inclusion, equity, and respect. And whereas, California has been a pioneer in providing extensive protections for LGBTQ+ people under California law, as demonstrated through the Gay Law Student Association, the Pacific Tel and Tel, where the California Supreme Court held that public institutions cannot discriminate against homosexuals as it violates the state constitution. This paved the way for California to pass Proposition 8 in 2008, acting as a second state to grant the same-sex marriages. And whereas, in 2016, California State Board of Education unanimously approved new social studies curriculum, including the evolution of gay rights and the contributions of LGBTQ+ figures in history, thereby implementing SB 48, Fair Education Act, signed into the law by Governor Jerry Brown in 2011, that prohibits discrimination in education and ensures contributions of Americans from all backgrounds and walks of life are included in history. Whereas, the history social science content standards for California public schools, kindergarten through grade 12, states that the importance for students to consider the way in which the quest for liberty, freedom, and equality have transformed the American populace and how these rights and privileges have been contested and reshaped over time. Now, therefore, I, Emmanuel J. Estrada, Mayor of the City of Baldwin Park, along with Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila, councilmembers Daniel Damian, Monica Garcia, Paul C. Hernandez, City Treasurer Maria E. Contreras, and City Clerk Marlene Garcia, do hereby proclaim the month of June as LGBTQ+ Pride Month in the City of Baldwin Park, and urge residents to recognize the importance of LGBTQ+ pride in the community and to actively promote principles of equality, liberty, and justice, and will reaffirm Baldwin Park's commitment to the LGBTQ+ community. I have the chair, I'm sorry.
Should we keep a little bit of distance?
Yeah, yeah, however you.
Probably.
Marie's coming.
Oh, yes, don't forget Marie.
Thank you.
If you want to say any words, you are more than welcome to.
Yes.
To the honorable City of Baldwin Park Councilmembers, the San Gabriel Valley LGBTQ Center is pleased to offer its strong support for the passage of the City of Baldwin Park Resolution recognizing June as Pride Month that has gone before the City Council. Since our inception in 2011, the Center has been working to increase the visibility of the LGBTQ+ community throughout the San Gabriel Valley. Due to the Safe at Home Order, it has been impossible for the LGBTQ community to gather in our usual regional pride celebrations, as they have all been canceled or postponed indefinitely. That is why recognizing the LGBTQ community's contributions in our society is needed even more, especially by such institutions as city governments, where many of our LGBTQ community members live and work. As an organization whose mission is to promote a safe and inclusive San Gabriel Valley for all people of all orientations and gender identities, we are incredibly honored and humbled that 52 years since Stonewall, the modern LGBTQ rights movement continues in our own neighborhoods. We are resolute in our support of local and regional efforts to increase the visibility of the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer community members that live, work, and raise families in the San Gabriel Valley. Although this win is monumental, we must not forget that many LGBTQ people do not enjoy protections in healthcare, housing, adoptions, and public businesses, such as business restaurants, bars, etc. There have been many advancements over the last five decades, but our team knows there is still much more work to be done. With an understanding that we need more than a seat at the table, I look forward to the continued advancement for a future of no hate in the San Gabriel Valley. As a proud trans woman of color and proud Baldwin Park resident from the San Gabriel Valley, I am ecstatic for the visible culture shift happening each and every day. The Center applauds your leadership efforts and remains committed to supporting you in further advocacy efforts for the LGBTQ community year-round.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we move on to the next proclamation, I just wanted to quote one of my favorite LGBTQ+ leaders, Harvey Milk, and that's, "All young people, regardless of sexual orientation or identity, deserve a safe and supportive environment in which to achieve their full potential." And I want to thank LGBT, SGB, uh, sorry. I want to thank Camilla Camillia for being here today with us. Not only is she a resident of Baldwin Park, she is homegrown, so I'm proud to see that, that many of our residents are out there fighting for change and things that mean, and make a major difference in our world. And so, at this point, I'd like to welcome up here our newly, our new City Manager and CEO, Enrique Zaldivar.
We travel in large numbers, you know that.
The honors.
It's just sitting there, so that guy.
Well, thank you, Mayor Estrada, Mayor Pro Tem Avila, Councilmember Garcia, Councilmember Hernandez, Councilmember Damian. It is an honor to be your CEO/City Manager. I thank you for the confidence you have bestowed in me on behalf of the nearly 80,000 residents you represent in this most beautiful city, the hub of the Valley City. I am cognizant of the fact that your expectations are high in demand, not just of me as the CEO, but most certainly of me as the CEO. In the limited number of visits I have been able to have so far to City Hall and the city with the city departments and staff, I know I am not alone in this journey. In addition to your governing leadership, I know I have great partners in Chief Lopez and the great BP PD. Finally have been able to get the LAPD out of my BP PD. Director Carrillo and RCS, I'm learning the new lexicon. Director Martinez in Community Development. Director Gutierrez in Public Works. Director Thomas in Human Resources. Director Tam in Finance, the money lady. I also look forward to working with City Clerk Garcia and City Treasurer Contreras. It didn't take long for me to discover that folks who are similarly essential in the day-to-day running of the city, Lulu and Rosa in the executive office, everyone says this city runs because of largely Lulu and, and Rosa. So I, with their permission, I have already made them my partners. That is also true of the folks in the Information Systems Group. And while I know I am embarking on a new journey, I know I will be traversing some trails already blazed by our current CEO, Shannon, who has been absolutely fantastic and gracious and guided me as I prepare to assume the office of the CEO/City Manager. Thank you, Shannon. I want to briefly introduce my family, who joined me today. Usually, I was joking that, you know, and in Spanish, we have a saying, un invitado, invitación, you know, Mayor Pro Tem. So we sort of broke the tradition, and only three of my family joined us. My wife Brenda, our son Alonso, and our daughter Karina. We have another son, the oldest of the three kids, who is in Phoenix, Arizona, and was not able to join us today, but hopefully, he's watching. So, thank you all, and I am very touched by your gesture today. Thank you so much, thank you. And lunch is on me.
So, we're all very excited to have Enrique here. He's a, he's a, by all means, a very charismatic leader, and we're excited for it. He's, he's shown me, you know, we were able to have breakfast at a local place, and, and he was able to really talk to the community. We've had a couple of people while we were walking the sidewalk, and he was able to talk to the waitress, he was able to talk to the, the business owner. He engaged in conversation with the pedestrians, and, and that really showed me that not only does Enrique have the leadership skills that Baldwin Park needs to continue moving forward and bettering our, our community, but he has the ability to, to really have a connection to our community, and that's one of the things that we prioritized here at, at City Hall. And, and I'm really excited to work with Enrique and all the many, many things that we will get done together.
Mayor, I'd also like to, I'd also like to make some remarks regarding our new CEO. I'm so very excited about the next chapter for our city, and I do want to mention that Mr. Zaldivar, Enrique Zaldivar, comes to the city with so much experience, being the Director General Manager of a major department out of the city of Los Angeles. But what I really appreciate about him, in addition to all of his experience, is where he came from. And he often will talk about growing up in Azusa, in a community very similar to ours. And I just felt, when we were going through the interview process, I felt the, the compassion and the, just the human, the humanity that, that he brought, you know, to this position because of his experience in a community very similar to ours. You know, the story of your family migrating or immigrating to the, to the United States, and what that meant for you growing up, you know, just the, the development in the city of Azusa, just the wonderful accomplishments that, you know, he was able to, you know, just reach. And, and it just is very much, very similar to what we want for our community here, right? We have, we are a community of third, fourth, first, second generation immigrants, whether it's Latino, whether it's Asian, and we're all striving for the same thing. We all want to be raised in a, in a community with a very strong quality of life, and that's something that I know that you appreciate, you know, through your, your journey of, of the succession, right, of your family, and then your beautiful family here, and all that you've been able to accomplish. So I know that you bring a heart for service, all of that said, for this community, and I just really look forward to, you know, that mission and seeing that mission, you know, being delivered here in the city of Baldwin Park. So, just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
Yes, thank you for coming to our city, you know, for being part of our, even considering being part of our, our community here, and we look forward to it. I'm very excited.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah, I like, most of my colleagues have already said, we're all excited that Enrique is going to be joining us. Shannon, we thank you for your years of service, but we are looking to move our city forward and with that, we felt that Mr. Saldivar was the best man for the job and so we're really excited to see what we can do together to move our city forward. Thank you and welcome to Baldwin Park, Mr. Saldivar.
Enrique, I mean, there's, there's not much that I could add that my other colleagues haven't already said so or will say, or will say soon. I'm extremely excited for our city, for the next journey that we'll be taking together, you know, the energy, the passion, you know, the vast accomplishments that you've had in your previous life, you know, it's one of those things in which, you know, I'm quite excited about and I know our residents are excited about. So with that, welcome to the city of Baldwin Park. You know, it's somewhere that, you know, you've known of and been around for quite some time throughout your, throughout your life and throughout your career, but I just want to say thank you for accepting this challenge, because it's, without a doubt, it will be a challenge. You know, you have five of us, me included, so that's one right there. But, you know, we all have a great vision for the city.
That's trouble more than a challenge.
So true, so true. But with that said, it's more about, you know, moving our great city forward, as Councilmember Damian mentioned, and, you know, it's, it's a great opportunity to join our city in what we're going to be doing over the next couple of years and even the next 10 years for your tenure. So again, thank you for being here. More importantly, I want to thank your family for being here and thank your wife and your children for the time that we're going to take, take them away from you, because there will be those weekends in time, so I apologize, but you know the job. And Shannon, thank you again for your partnership and your mentorship and your guidance over the last seven years and even the last couple of years that you and I have connected. You know, it's been fantastic. I'm certainly envy of what your next journey will take, you know, considering the 16-plus acres of, you know, wilderness that you'll be enjoying and so forth. It sounds like fun, so, and well deserved, so thank you for everything that you've done for the city of Baldwin Park. You've certainly made a mark here that will continue on for, for the years to come, so please, you know, when you're back home, feel free to visit your second home here in Baldwin Park. Thank you.
Well, Mr. Saldivar, you're here. Are you sure? Just kidding. I teased him and I said, you know, that I told him I was very happy, we were all very excited to have him here and I said to him, "But now you have to prove yourself." But I know for a fact that he will prove to be the right person for this job. He has the same goals that the rest of the council has, he has the same vision that we have, he has the same type of background like Ms. Monica said that our city has. He comes from a city very similar to us, El Astix, right, Azusa High School. So, so being, having said that, we're very comfortable and excited to see a person with common goals coming here and I know he's going to do great. Again, I know you're going to prove yourself, I have no doubt in my mind, so welcome you. I welcome the family. Keep us posted on how you do on your competitions, because I know Dad said you will be going, what was your name again, I'm sorry?
Karina.
Karina. And I know you're very competitive, so I want to welcome the whole family and yes, Dad will be very busy, but he'll still make time for you, so thank you.
Thank you.
Avila, I just want to, here to Baldwin Park. Anyway, I'm not a poll reader, just by listening to you, delivering your acceptance, too, give a lot of peace. Sound like you're very honest to me. Might be hurting, but it's fine. But I just want to ask, welcome you. God bless you and your family.
Just briefly, you have a lot of experience here and all of us. I have served on the City Council 14 years in the past and have a tremendous heart for Baldwin Park and I know that you did too, had an opportunity to meet you earlier and again, being from Azusa, the neighboring city, you bring a lot of that experience with you, you mirror the community, so we're excited to have you here. Welcome to the city of Baldwin Park.
And before we move on, I do want to invite our Chief of Police up here so we can get one last picture with, with our, with our team. This, this year has been a great opportunity for, for council to, to take advantage of every opportunity we've gotten and build a great team and I know Chief didn't get a big audience either, but, you know, we're excited to have Chief Enrique here, so I just want to capture this moment in history.
Well, and Mayor, can I also suggest that we bring all the directors up so that we can get that first photo?
Yeah, I'm, yes, yes, everybody come up here. Should we get one with Shannon?
Yes.
Before he takes off.
Shannon's already on vacation.
You like that class picture you're taking from middle school?
Can you get one of them?
Everybody, please. Anybody else?
She'll share.
She'll share.
Yeah, I will.
Airdrop.
I will.
Come on.
From half of the day. Everybody is serious?
You have stories to tell your grandchildren.
Thank you, thank you. And now, of course, we're going to recognize Shannon. Shannon, please come up here. There's a plaque from the city of Baldwin Park. Shannon Yahtzee, Chief Executive Officer, City of Baldwin Park, July 2014, December 2020. With deepest gratitude and appreciation of over six years of service, we thank you for your dedicated and unending commitment to the staff members, residents, businesses, surrounding cities, and various organizations. Your devotion and hard work will never be forgotten. We wish you the best in your retirement and future endeavors. And then I, for Assemblywoman, so I believe, and then I believe we have Veronica on the line from Assemblywoman Rubio's office. If we can maybe unmute her, she can say some words.
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great, great. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Mayor, council, staff, and audience listening at home. First of all, welcome to the new CEO, Mr. Saldivar. Looking forward to working with your, with you and your staff. I have a couple of projects already in line, so I'll be calling you soon. And Shannon, first of all, I just want to thank you for always answering my call, always answering my emails, very responsive, really appreciate that from you and your staff. Thank you. But on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, and I know that we, I have a plaque, a frame certificate for you there already, on behalf of Assemblywoman Blanca Rubio, would like to say thank you for your leadership this past seven years. The city has come a long way. Thank you for the dedication to the community, to the council, and to neighboring community as well. Thank you. Happy retirement. I hear Arizona is calling and wish you lots of luck. So again, thank you. Happy retirement. Thank you, Council, for your time.
Thank you.
And we also have from the Senator's office, Denica Mendoza as well.
Do we have somebody for Susan Rubio's office?
Yes, hello. Good evening. Good evening to council, city staff, and the community joining us today. I'm Denica Mendoza with the Office of Senator Susan Rubio. The Senator does send her apologies that she's not able to join us today virtually, but nonetheless, she wanted to share just a few sentiments with outgoing CEO Shannon Yahtzee. She really would just like to congratulate you, Shannon, for the incredible work that you've done for the city. The Senator had the pleasure of welcoming you initially to the city of Baldwin Park and working with you during her tenure on City Council and during this huge milestone of yours, she, she really just wants to share congratulations and best wishes on your future endeavors. Our office also dropped off a small token of our appreciation for you, a frame certificate. And we really would just like to applaud, yes, that one right there, we really just would like to applaud your exemplary leadership and outstanding commitment to the betterment of Baldwin Park, to promoting civic engagement of our residents, and with that, we send you all the best, warm wishes as you enjoy retirement. So congratulations.
Thank you. And I believe we have somebody here from Cruz Napolitanos' office.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I wanted to be here in person because Mr. Yahtzee, Shannon, I'm going to call you, was the first person to welcome me as a field representative for the Congresswoman into the city, so just want to tell you, the Congresswoman, I was with her earlier this afternoon and she would like to be here, but of course she's staying home, you know, she, she wanted us to thank you for all the work you've done for us, for the 32nd Congressional District and for the residents of Baldwin Park. We also brought a small token of our appreciation to you. Retirement, you know, that, that's our ultimate goal for all of us and after all the hard work you put in, I congratulate you for that, so thank you for all your work here and I look forward to working with the new CEO and welcoming him. We'll set up a meeting soon with the Congresswoman, but for now, you know, thank you, thank you, and happy retirement.
Thank you from, oh.
Shannon, before you start, Senator Rubio did call me right before the meeting and she asked me to thank you on her behalf. She's really sorry that she could not be here, she wanted to be here, but she asked me to please make sure that you specifically tell her that I'm sorry I'm not here, but that she's very excited and happy for you and that you did so much for our city and happy retirement.
Thank you from the Congresswoman and Assemblymember and State Senator, thank you for those beautiful certificates. I do want to take opportunity to thank the Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, the City Council, and electeds, and, and, you know, thank everybody, the directors here, the managers at the city, all the staff at every level, and thanking the residents, the businesses, the Business Association, together, that whole team helped to improve Baldwin Park over the years and it's really good to be able to leave and feel like I've made a difference here. I think you're in really good hands with Enrique. We have some things in common, we both graduated from Cal Poly about three years apart and we're both civil engineers and both our daughters play volleyball, so I think you're in good hands. But, you know, without even telling Enrique, I came from West Covina previously, we met a couple days ago and he said, he's really impressed, "When you drive in from West Covina to Baldwin Park, the streets in Baldwin Park and the landscaping look so much better." So, I really felt good about that because probably 10 years ago, in some of the streets, it was, it was the opposite. So I think, you know, we've all done, everybody from top to bottom, a great job of improving the city and I leave you in good hands. Thank you.
I don't want to.
I just do one picture.
With the logo in the back.
If I had three, four hands, I'd hold the other.
Put one on your feet.
Picture with the council?
Do you want to take pictures first or do you want to?
That's why we can, we can, some of us can hold.
Oh, okay.
I can say a few words.
Want us to help you with your certificate?
Like this.
Put this one on a necklace.
Which one was this?
And of course, I, I want to thank Shannon. I didn't get to work with Shannon seven years, but I got to work with him seven months and that was a, and Shannon played an important role in, in helping Councilmember Damian and myself, I'm sure, get grounded here at City Council and, and figuring out how things work and, and learning and really getting used to, to the system. I know I bugged Shannon any time of the day, I gave him a little bit of a curfew, so maybe after 10 o'clock I wouldn't text him anymore, but even on weekends and, you know, and it was if I had an idea, I'd read, and he would be responsive, so, you know, I appreciate that and I thank him for it because he's one of the, the people that really, one of the very few people I could, I could look for to ask, to ask for questions and get some answers in return, so thank you Shannon for, for really helping us set ground here at City Hall.
Well, Shannon, I wish I was you. I just want to thank you for all the years that you have been in the city of Baldwin Park, making a difference for our residents, for, for our council. I know you've guided many of us in, in the direction that we should be moving. As a city clerk, I didn't get to interact as much with you, but in the last two years I've gotten, to get to know you a little better, so I thank you for your guidance. I thank you for your leadership in all the years that you put in to the city of Baldwin Park, although you were in government in West Covina for how many years was that? For 18 years, so you deserve to retire, you deserve a break, but thank you for everything you did for the city of Baldwin Park. Happy retirement.
Shannon, again, congrats on retirement. I mean, that's such an awesome goal, you know, to be, to be able to go back, you know, back home with your wife and all the other new activities and new hobbies that you'll probably create or join or do, whatever the case might be. You know, again, thank you for everything that you've done for the city. You certainly have left, you know, a footprint, a very large footprint for Enrique to follow, but, you know, again, thank you for everything, your partnership, your friendship, and your mentorship. You know, as the Mayor said, you're always one that we can call upon regardless of the time or hour and get those, you know, get that, get that answer or that request back. So again, thank you for everything that you've done for our residents. And enjoy retirement.
Well, Shannon, I just want to say thank you just for being, you know, such a rock here at the city. And we've seen a lot of changes in the last seven years. You know, a lot of highs and lows. We've recently experienced, you know, some media attention that we never enjoy. But, you know, we know that there's been so much good that has happened here. And I want to thank you for just really being the stability through it all. And, you know, all the good work that you have helped lead here in the city. You know, your management style has been so appreciated in that, like I said, I think it brought a lot of stability. It really gained, you were able to gain a lot of trust and really respect, you know, from the E-Team and I think from the different ranks of employees here at the city. And so I just want to thank you for that because, you know, it's so much needed when we do experience those ebbs and flows. And every city, every city experiences that, right? But it just always helps to have somebody so level-headed. And you've been seeking the consensus of the council, which is very smart. You've been really smart about, you know, how you manage all of our personalities and, you know, our different personalities, not only on this council, but previous councils. And so it just speaks to, you know, your skill and your temperament, which I very much have appreciated. And it's really, you know, it really speaks to the leadership, I think, that you brought here to the city for the last seven years. So I want to say thank you. I think that we have created a great platform, you know, for the next chapter as we bring in Enrique Zaldivar. And so anything that we accomplish moving forward, I think we can look back on and say, you know, we set the foundation, we set a solid foundation. And a lot of it was with your leadership. So with that, I also want to congratulate you as you embark on your retirement. And, you know, all the years that you have worked in city government, I applaud you, you know, for your career trajectory in public administration and public service. And I hope that you get to enjoy your beautiful fort with your dogs and, you know, all the family. I've seen you on your travels. And I hope that you can just really indulge in that now, now in this next chapter. I imagine that we'll probably see you resurface in, you know, in another role. I wouldn't be surprised. But for now, indulge, enjoy. You've, you know, you've earned it. And so with that, I just want to say thank you.
Yeah, Shannon, I would, I mean, what can I say after all my colleagues have spoken very highly of you? I mean, at the capacity that the mayor and I have been working with you, it's only been a few months. But I do want to thank you for taking the time to take our calls, answer our questions, give us the guidance and your, not only your input and your ideas and your opinions, but like Councilmember Monica Garcia said, you were the foundation. You were the one that kind of kept us from killing ourselves sometimes, right? But you were that person that always, you know, kept us grounded. And, you know, we always stood that consensus. And we have learned to respect each other, and that was under your guidance as well. I want to wish you the best of luck and happy retirement. Thank you for your years.
Shannon, congratulations on your retirement. Thank you for your many contributions to the city of Baldwin Park. One thing I can tell you all about Shannon is I always admired when I would go to the events after I retired from being a council member, and he would be there at all the different events. And to me, that's a great sign of a wonderful leader who has the pulse of the community at hand. And that's very important, and I always admired that, particularly the days you brought your dog. That was really, really awesome to see. So congratulations. Enjoy your retirement. We're right behind you, hopefully, one day. Thank you again for all of your contributions to the city of Baldwin Park.
It's really strange being retired because you open your eyes and you say, oh, I don't have to get up.
Thank you, everybody.
And then, City Clerk, at this moment, I will move to open public communications. Is there anybody looking to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We have four speakers, Beatriz Sandoval, Kiana Martinez, Paul Cook, and Catherine Lozier.
Who's the first caller?
Beatriz Sandoval.
Hi, Beatriz, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So Mayor Estrada here, calling you regarding public communication. You have three minutes, okay?
Hi, Mr. Manuel, thank you for calling. Yes, I want to speak from this meeting. So, yes. I want to speak about this meeting to say thank you, Shannon, for everything you do for our city. And also welcome to Mr. Enrique. This is a great community, Latino community, once most of them is Latino. Bienvenido a nuestra comunidad. Last meeting, as all of you mentioned, the appreciation for many staff members of the city. And July, you doing right, Mr. Lulu Morales, having to a great job to maintain the communication with the city members of residents and the city council. But also, I noticed anybody saying nothing about the hard work Mr. Marzou are doing or a technician communication team or technician. I don't know what is the department he is working. But I saw his name always in the YouTube meetings and all the force he are doing to. We as residents have the information at the present in the meeting, especially now to COVID-19. So even he showed down the comments or the chat in the YouTube. I know it's not his decision, but I want to say thank you to him and the other people there. Back to the camera to say thank you. And we as community appreciate so much their efforts and their job.
Thank you for calling, Beatriz.
Thank you, Ms. Beatriz.
Thank you.
Chief Deputy, who's next?
Our next caller is Kiana Martinez.
Hello?
Hi, is Kiana available?
Hello?
Hello?
I'm sorry, we're calling for Kiana. She requested to speak at a council meeting.
I think you got a wrong number.
Sorry about that.
Chief Deputy, do you want to try again, or do you want to move on to the next person?
Let me try one more time.
Hello?
Hi, Kiana?
Yes, this is Kiana.
Hi, Kiana, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you for public communications. You have three minutes, okay?
Okay, thank you. So I would like to start with agenda item number six. I think that it's unfortunate that we encourage and apply for federal funds for the police and hardly for any other investment in community services. But even so, overall, we should stop focusing on providing funds for the police and improving that when we already have one of the highest police budgets. Or we do have the number one police budget in the city. And, I'm sorry, in the county in the San Gabriel Valley. So we have the highest police budget in the San Gabriel Valley. Additionally, additionally, I believe you all should consider putting the budget, police budget in general. And there's various ways that we can do that, either with wages or with other things. And that goes, you know, with, the same thing with the body camera situation. There's various studies that show that there's no change in the violent use of force by police officers towards residents if they have body cameras. And there's been studies from the Washington DC study, according to NPR, that there wasn't any change in the use of force. And so basically, it's a waste of money and it's a waste of applying for federal funds when we literally have a very serious crisis for unhoused folks and eviction crisis right now. And so I just want to note that. And since I was just a few minutes late on the public comment for last week or two weeks ago, I would like to add that for buildings, like new, adding into the affordable housing that y'all were talking about before, I'm really thankful to the council members and the mayor, Emmanuel, for, you know, really standing up for our community that we need affordable housing and that that project was not what we needed as a community. And so I really appreciate that. And I want to also just add something, though, that these projects, the affordable housing projects that y'all were talking about are good, but they're not everything the community needs because it's not permanent. It's like a contract that usually is only for a certain amount of years. And so we really want to look into permanent solutions for our community. And so I really urge the City Council to look into Community Land Trust. There's various cities that are doing research on that, have started the city to do research on that and how we can participate. And there is the LA County Fund.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Chief Deputy, who is next?
The next caller is Paul Cook.
Yeah?
Hi, Mr. Paul Cook.
Hello?
Hey, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from City Council regular meeting.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can't hear you.
Hi, we're calling from the city of Baldwin Park. This is your time to speak. Your time starts now. You may go ahead and speak.
Chief Deputy, did you just want to call him and then maybe you talk to him?
Please leave your message.
So I can try again?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Catherine Lozier.
Hello?
Hi, is this Catherine Lozier?
Yes, sir.
Hello, this is Mayor Estrada from the city of Baldwin Park. I am calling you regarding your request for public communication. You have three minutes, okay?
Thank you so much. So good evening again, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protam, councilmembers, community partners, and fellow community members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to take a moment first to welcome Mr. Zaldivar. We look forward to working with you, sir. And I also wanted to thank Mr. Yahtzee for the many years of public service and your support to the library. We wish you the very best in your retirement. Tonight, I wanted to share that the Baldwin Park Library will be one of a select LA County library site that will be providing lunch at the library on Tuesdays through Fridays, June 14th through August 6th, from 12 to 1:00 p.m. We've been providing lunches since 2015. But this year, we are partnering with the LA Regional Food Bank. And this year, we'll be providing not one, but two nutritious meals for kids and teens under 18. We'll be offering a reusable lunch and breakfast. The meals will be available for The meals will be available for, uh, no contact pickup on a first come, first served basis, and there will be no restrictions on family income. And parents and caregivers this year can pick up meals on behalf of their children. The kids and the teens don't need to be present, but they are most always welcome. And our Lunch at the Library program is again a partnership with the Los Angeles Regional Food Bank, as well as it is supported by the California Summer Meal Coalition and the California Library Association. And this program is supported by a grant from the California Library Association. And so thank you all so much and have a wonderful evening.
All right, thank you for calling, Ms. Lozier.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there anybody else looking to speak?
Yes, we have a surprise for Mr. Yahtzee. We have a few members who would like to congratulate you. The first is Chris Freeland.
Hello?
Hi, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling from the city of Baldwin Park regarding your request for public communication. You have, uh, three minutes, okay?
Hello, how is everybody doing this evening?
They're doing great.
We're doing well. You can go ahead and speak now.
All right, thank you. Mayor, Council, Chris Freeland, City Manager for the City of Indian Wells. Um, first I just want to congratulate Enrique on his new appointment as CEO for Baldwin Park. Um, you're looking for a truly amazing city, so congratulations. Uh, to my dear friend Shannon Yahtzee, congratulations on your retirement. I met Shannon in my first city job in 2001 by starting looking for the city of West Covina as an analyst in the City Manager's Department. Um, we had some truly amazing times in West Covina and some not so amazing times, but during that time, we became good friends, you know, because of our common interest in Cal Poly Civil Engineering. So Enrique, hearing that you're a civil engineer chief of Cal Poly, it's obvious now that civil engineers aren't successful unless they're city managers. Um, to Shannon, congratulations on your retirement. Um, you get, you have a lot to be proud of, all the accomplishments in both West Covina and Baldwin Park, and they've, you really set them up for great success. Damien Island sent our love to you, Lisa, your daughters, and of course, your puppies. And we wish you the best of luck in retirement and hope to see you soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Let me go to the next speaker. Next speaker is Jeff Anderson.
Hi, hello, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request for public communication.
Yes, um, I'm Jeff Anderson, and I wanted to say congratulations to Shannon. Um, we worked together for about 13, 14 years at the city of, well, West Covina, and I always had a good time working with him and, uh, got a lot done with him. And I know he's worked very hard at, uh, City of Baldwin Park, and I want to wish him well in his retirement and just say that he's earned it. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Hello?
Hi, is this Fabiola?
Hello?
Hi, Fabiola, this is, uh, Lulu calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. You would like, you requested to congratulate, uh, Shannon Yahtzee.
Oh, yes, um, thank you for calling me. Um, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, and thank you for the opportunity, opportunity to address Shannon Yahtzee. Um, I just want to wish him a happy retirement. I have had the pleasure of knowing Shannon for about 14 years. I worked with him in the city of West Covina, where he was the Public Works Director. And as we both left that city, we kept in touch, and Shannon became a mentor, someone who I could reach out to and always, um, uh, provide a professional development. And I want to thank Shannon for all of the patience that he served, as well as, um, making the difference to other public sector professionals. So my husband and I would like to wish, wish him a happy retirement. He's going to be missed, and please keep in touch. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye-bye.
Chief Deputy City Clerk, is there any more speakers?
No, Mayor.
All right, so at this moment, I will close, uh, public communication, and I believe we are moving on to consent calendar. Are there any items city council members are, are wishing to pull? If not, at, if not, at this moment, I'll make a, uh, I'll pull number, I'll pull item number seven. So at this moment, I'll make a motion to, uh, to pass consent calendar items one through six, and that excludes number seven and number three. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No? So at this moment, uh, Mayor Pretend, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, I just want to thank, uh, Human Resources Laura for taking the time this item was on the agenda before, and there was some questions, uh, and so Laura really looked into it and, uh, found, um, some things that needed to be adjusted. And I know it took a lot of work, so I thank you, Laura, uh, for taking the time and looking into this claim. And not only this claim, but all the claims. I know it's a lot of work and a lot of detailed information, uh, exact information that you need in order to approve these, and you took that time because there was a question about it. And, um, I, I'm very happy with the outcome with the work that you're doing. So thank you for, uh, diligent in the work that you're doing when, when it comes to these claims because it is that person's livelihood at the end of the day. So thank you for taking the time. With that, I would make a motion to approve item number three.
I'll second. Any objections? No? So item number three passes. And then item number seven, so Shannon, if you could just give us a, a quick rundown of maybe what item seven entails and, and what it, what it does?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, uh, the city council had asked, uh, staff to prepare a request for proposals, uh, for overflow and as-needed legal services to, uh, expand the pool of attorneys that the city has to draw on to make sure that we have the, um, knowledge and the expertise to handle any of the cases, uh, that we need. Um, staff, a group of staff and the directors, um, reviewed and evaluated the proposals and, uh, were recommending that those in the shaded, um, table be, uh, approved, um, to be brought on contract with the city for, um, as-needed overflow and legal services.
Great, thank you. Uh, I don't know if any council members have any questions or concerns regarding item number seven?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Shannon, um, or you yourself, can you just elaborate as to how the criteria was selected for the folks that are being recommended?
Sure, staff, staff looked at each proposal, um, a group of staff, uh, myself, uh, Ben, uh, I think Sam and Manny, did you look at that one? No? Uh, and we evaluated the proposals, um, based on the services provided and the services needed by the city. Um, we looked at their experience with other cities, um, and their work with other cities. Uh, the, the list, um, could be expanded. Um, the city council, um, could choose to include additional firms from, from that table. Um, however, it was just staff's evaluation that, you know, based on that criteria, these were the firms, uh, best fitted.
And did we do any follow-up calls with the cities that they represent?
Um, a couple, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Mayor. So Shannon, if we approve this list, we can still add more later, or do we have to wait?
No, we could, we can, yeah, we can add. We have a pool of attorneys, um, and, you know, in some ways, you know, the better the pool is, the more, um, we can draw on certain expertises. Um, some of these firms have really good expertise in, um, public works and construction defects that public works might want to draw from. Others have the expertise, um, in housing, um, and affordable housing, and, and that would interest, um, uh, community development. Others, um, uh, specialize in general law or, or litigation or defending the cities.
And as long as we could still add more later at that.
If I may? And Shannon, I have a question since, are, can we exclude any that are on this list?
So, so those, um, that are showing up shaded are the ones that we're recommending. Alvarez Glassman, Atkinson, Adelson, Lord, Romo, uh, Burke Williams and Sorensen, Jones and Mayer, Oliver, Adruga, Lemon, and Neal, um, and Richard Watson, Gershon. Those are the ones from the list that we are recommending, but the council certainly could add or delete any from that list.
Only the highlighted you're recommending?
Correct, they're highlighted. If you have the shown in color, it's blue shaded.
And, uh, Councilmember Hernandez asked a good question. Have you had contacted prior cities or checked their background? Only because I've, I've done my research on some of them, and, um, I do have concerns on some of the ones that are highlighted in blue. So it, it's still, if we pass this entire list, it's still up to us who we want to use from here, or can we exclude them, or how is this going to work?
So, so generally, I mean, if they're, if they're approved and put on contract with the city, um, and, and, you know, large lawsuits or litigation that go before the council are, and are discussed in closed session, certainly you're going to have discretion on who, who you use. If they're added to the list, um, and there's a firm that, um, uh, first, for example, community development needs to consult with on a housing issue, they might go to them directly to get specialized services, um, that possibly the city attorney, you know, may not have. But as far as large lawsuits and litigation and defending the city, um, yeah, the city council would have say in that.
Um, I don't know if, uh, if this would require further discussion, maybe, uh, for us to look at the firms that are there and maybe have a discussion between us as to which firms we agree and we disagree with. Um, only again, because I do have about four that I've done research, well, I've done research, I'm trying to do research on most all of them, but there were four that I have concerns about. So I don't know, uh, if I feel comfortable passing the entire list, maybe bringing it back after we discuss, possibly to see what we select. So if I could make a motion to... Would we be bringing, bringing it back to the next meeting?
Would you like to maybe, um, select certain ones that you're comfortable with at this point?
Uh, you guys want to go down the list and select a couple?
So can we, how can we do that? Can we, can we select a couple and then maybe bring back the list again?
Yeah, definitely.
At a future meeting and then go through those?
Definitely.
Or, I mean, can I suggest that we just take up the item just as a full conversation at the next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, that's also an option. I, I think I would feel more comfortable. I know that we, we want to bring these in as soon as possible, but we also want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence in selecting the best firms that are going to, you know, be able to work with us. So, yeah, I mean, I think it's best that we bring it in, uh, for full discussion and select from there which ones would be the best ones.
I'll, I'll support that. If that's your motion, then I'll second.
From the ones that are applied, how many are not on here?
Well, these are, on the table, all of these are, um, firms that provided a response to us.
Also, all of these responded.
All of them responded. These are the only ones that responded to our RFP, and, and the ones that I read off that are shaded, those are the ones that, um, were recommended based on staff's review.
Unless, I mean, my recommendation would be to bring it back. Either we can do a special meeting next week or wait for two weeks. I mean, whatever's...
I'd be okay just bringing it back to the next meeting.
Next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the, I'll make, I'll make the motion to bring it back to the next meeting.
I'll second.
Any objections? No? Okay, motion passes. So at this point, we move on to the public hearing, and I believe there's a, public hearing and adoption of a resolution number 2021 dash 020, ordering the assessment for the citywide landscaping and lightning maintenance assessment districts for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Um, and then, uh, before I open up the public hearing, maybe we can get, uh, some details on what the public hearings are for?
Yes, um, Public Works Director Sam Gutierrez is here. He will give you a, a brief overview of this item.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yeah, uh, this, uh, item, uh, is for a public hearing regarding the annual levy and assessment, uh, for the, uh, citywide, uh, landscape and lighting maintenance district. Um, staff is recommending that a public hearing be, uh, be held and that public testimony be heard, and then, uh, recommending to adopt the resolution.
Okay, so at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing, uh, for the adoption of resolution number 2021 dash 020, ordering the assessments for the citywide landscaping and lightning maintenance assessment district for fiscal year 2020 dash 2021. Uh, City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak in favor?
No, Mayor, no speakers.
Okay, so no speakers in favor and no speakers against, correct?
Correct.
Great, so at this moment, I will close the public hearing, and I will entertain motions. Anybody making a motion or any questions, concerns?
I'll make the motion to pass.
Second.
Okay. Is there any objections? None? All right, and at this moment, we move on to item number nine, and that's public hearing and adoption of resolution number 2021 dash 021, ordering the assessment for the citywide park maintenance district for fiscal year 2021 dash 2022. Um, Sam, could you give us an overview?
Yes, so similarly, this is for the, uh, park, uh, maintenance district. Uh, this is the public hearing to, um, order the levy of the assessments, uh, for this, for the public, uh, for the public park, uh, maintenance programs.
Right, so at this moment, I will officially open the public hearing.
No, no speakers, Mayor, for or against?
Great, okay, and at this moment, I will officially close the public hearing. City Council, any question, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion to pass, Mayor.
Great, second, any objections? No? So item nine, number, item number nine passes, and at this moment, uh, we move on to city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff requests and communications, and I believe Councilmember Damien, you have the floor. Councilmember Damien, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, the, my first request is, um, for City Council discussion and direction on the startup of the 2021 Baldwin Park Summer Street Fair Series and implementation of a grant program using American Rescue Plan funding for Baldwin Park businesses to participate in the event after discussion. So, uh, for this particular item, unfortunately, due to a lack of staff within the Parks and Recreation Department and them having issues with hiring people, we're not going to have the manpower to move forward with this program. However, I would still like to entertain a motion, uh, to see if we can allocate at least $25,000 from AARP funds for next year's, um, so that we can use that money for this, our small businesses' entry fees. That way, they don't have to pay their fees for their booths. What my idea behind this whole thing was, since we're reopening, trying to give them that boost to where they can come in, have their booths for free, and make their money. And so, we would use that $25,000 to offset their fees, uh, therefore helping our small businesses in the city. So, if we can still entertain the motion to allocate $25,000, uh, for the entry fees for next year's street market.
Councilmember Damien, if I may?
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. No, I still, I fully support your, uh, the intent. The one thing I would ask is perhaps instead of making a motion and dedicating that money right now, um, that we add that to the list of items that staff is going to big, bring back as a report back, so we have an entire totality of understanding how we can use the AARP, uh, AARP, um, use the, the recovery funds, uh, instead of just piecemealing it right now. I have no problem with, with doing this. I'd just like to know for myself how we can do this in a context with everything else that's, that staff's going to be proposing to us, because I'm still learning about how we can use the money. That's why I haven't made any motions myself, but I'd certainly have no problem doing this. But I, if we can just, if we can perhaps direct staff, add it to the list of items that they're bringing back, so we have a full totality of everything of how we're looking at spending.
So, you're talking about the events that we were talking about earlier in open session?
Not necessarily those events, but just entirety of how we're looking to spend the recovery fund.
The AARP.
Exactly, so, it's on the list for consideration at that time.
Yeah, no, definitely. I mean, yeah, as long as we, as long as we're able to allocate some of those funds to the small businesses, yeah, I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Because the other thing is the restrictions, and here's my other thing, is we just can't give money to, to businesses, because the businesses are going to have to provide us some form of information back, and that was a big challenge that we had, um, when we were trying to do the business assistance program, um, and same with the renter, renter assistance program. But I just want to, again, I just want us, all of us to understand, you know, what are the restrictions, what are the challenges, and what are the opportunities such as this for us to be able to allocate this type of fund? So, I'm not against it. I just would like for us to have a better understanding from a $30,000 view, um, once staff is bringing those recommendations at a later time, instead of dedicating $25,000 right now instead.
Yeah, no, I mean...
If you're open to that.
Yeah, I'm open to it, yeah, as long as, let's go ahead and add it to the list, and then once we know exactly how much money we want to allocate to certain funds, and we get the exact guidelines of how we can spend that money, then we can have a discussion to allocate the $25,000 or whatever it is.
And I'd support that motion.
You want to, you want to go ahead and...
I don't know, it's your motion.
Take the motion? Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion to go ahead and add it to the list of other events that we may possibly have to use with the AARP funds, uh, and then once we have the guidelines of exactly how we can use those funds, then we can go ahead and decide how much we'll allocate to that.
I'll second, unless somebody else has discussion.
Any objections? Okay, and that's, uh, clear direction. Councilmember Damien, you have the floor again.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, my second, uh, request is, um, City Council discussion in calibration with the city in Baldwin Park Unified School District to create regarding a mental awareness walk from City Hall to Baldwin Park Performing Arts Center on Saturday, August 7th, 2021, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. The proposed event will bring mental awareness to the community and encourage residents to seek assistance and remove the stigma associated with the illness and the assistance pertaining to post-traumatic stress syndrome, PTSD, and also highlight the American Legion and assist the Legion with generating revenue. So, in this particular case, what we did was we had a, a discussion with, um, a foundation called Oath to Country. It's a nonprofit, and they bring, uh, suicide awareness, mental awareness, uh, they work a lot with our veterans, and since the mayor had spoken to the American Legion up on Main, and we realized that they're having a lot of financial issues, we figured we wanted to raise money for the American Legion, but then kind of marrying the two, to not only raise money for the American Legion, but also provide a, um, mental awareness and suicide awareness, walking to the Performing Arts Center, which we've had a conversation with the school district, and they're allowing us to use their facility and partnering up with us. And what we're going to do at, there at the Performing Arts Center is basically have booths set up with a lot of different types of resources, um, not only our local mental, uh, facility, California Mental Facility here, but other, um, organizations. So, we want to go ahead and give direction, uh, if you guys are in consensus with it, to, um, get this walk going for August 7th. Anybody have any questions for discussion?
Questions, concerns? No? Okay, so, I think that, uh, do you want to make a motion, or is it clear direction that we're all in consensus, uh, for this event?
Yeah, I think if we're all in consensus, just...
Yeah, and I think it's...
Direction.
And I think it'll bring, uh, great, um, visibility to the American Legion. It's the last standing legion in our, in our area. I believe the VFW has, has closed at this point, um, so I think it's very important that we, that we take care of that place and help them out in whatever way we can. So, with that being said, I believe we are all out of, oh, Marie, Marie has the floor.
Before I leave, or we leave, I just want to say thank you for having a meeting here. It's very exciting to me to see and meet all of you. And I also want to welcome the chief. I had not been able to say hello, and, uh, thanks staff for all their hard work. And I also want to thank Mark for being so helpful every Wednesday to give me all the information and putting me in contact with all of you beautiful people. Have a blessed night, and thank you so much.
Thank you, Marie.
Thank you, Marie.
Good to see you, Marie.
Yes, yes, and we are all excited to be here and, and get to see Marie and say hi to her in person finally, so... And we've added you to the roll call. I don't know if you noticed, City Clerk, that's part of the roll call now, so we'll be hearing your voice more often.
She's a good leader.
Okay, so with that being said, I believe, uh, we still have a closed session. We didn't close, did we close it? Okay, so at this moment...
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we closed the closed session.
Great, okay, so at this moment, uh, we will, we will adjourn. Can I get a second? Any objections? All right.
Okay.
Good night.
So, nobody, everybody's being held hostage for Shannon today.
Nobody leaves.
Shannon, you can't go yet.